We're going to ask everyone to please rise for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure, if you bow with your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Father, and as always, we're grateful for your Son, we're grateful for your grace and mercy, Father. We just ask that everything we do and we conduct ourselves in an honorable way in this meeting. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen. Next item up, real call, I am present. Alderman Dent.
I'm present.
Alderman Kinsey.
Present.
Alderman Whalen.
Present.
Alderman Letchworth.
Here.
City Administrator Burridge.
Present.
City Clerk Callard.
Present.
City Attorney Weber is absent. Public Works Director Payne. Chief of Police Chase. Finance Director Stacy Houston. I don't think we have any other city staff here or not. Tonight, or next up will be the approval of tonight's agenda with the removal for the language we have at the end for closed session.
I move to approve the agenda with the removal of the closed session portions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion.
I'll second.
This time I will call for the vote, Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
And Alderman Woman Dent.
Yes.
Next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval of consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I will call for the vote, Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
We have no one here tonight for public comment. Next up is bids for the radio equipment for the police department.
Chief, did you want to speak to this?
So the staff summary you have in front of you is on a new portable radio unit, that's what we use in our patrol cars. It's called trunking unit, the body of the radio sits all the way in the back of the car, and then there's just a head unit that sits up front. The part that's in the back, which is the actual radio, is the part that's out. And so, to replace it, we requested bids initially for an equivalent system, and we got a bid from Motorola and Wireless USA, and they only offered, there was only $400 difference between that one, that Motorola, and the Harris XL that we also requested a bid on. And the difference would have been eaten up in installation, and so we currently run a Harris base radio, all of our portables are Harris radios. And so the plan is, is that we would, we would start transitioning away from Motorola to Harris. They're just as reliable. And we have a good company in RCC for warranty work, service after the sale, and they've assisted the city with several other issues, tower climbs, antenna repairs, things like that, and they're very responsive. Wireless USA, we, we had used them for some service work in the past, and it's kind of an event trying to get them here in a timely manner. So, any questions about the bid? And we did have, we did attempt to have the other unit repaired, but there was no repairing it, and I'm not exactly sure what was wrong with it, but they just said it was beyond repair. But we are exploring other options on that, we're not just going to leave a $5,000 brick sitting around, or try and see if we can do something with it, obtain some type of value back.
So you believe Harris ought to be a little bit more dependable, you know, as far as?
They're, they're kind of neck and neck, Harris and Motorola. I mean, the edge would probably go to Motorola just simply because they're more prolific, there, there's a lot more Motorola out there. But when we were transitioning to our radios, we went with the 185s for their, for our portables to start with, they were the only ones that were affordable for us, that were most win capable, so we could be on like Sheriff's Network, things like that. And they linked up well with our repeater system, and so, and we've had them several years. We've had very few issues, still going strong, guys like them, they work well.
Their service is much better. The, the service techs, the, the company from, for Harris, or their rep for Harris, yeah.
Yeah, we, Motorola, and it's, it's not to dog them, I mean, but they're just, they're just not as quick or as responsive when there's a request. When we got hit with lightning, RCC was there the very next day pulling equipment, getting us pricing bids, all the things we needed to keep ourselves back up and running.
That's all we have. All right, thank you Chief.
You bet.
This time do I have a motion?
I'm, oh, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the bid for the radio equipment for the police department.
I second that motion.
There's no further questions, I call for the vote, Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
And Alderman Dent.
Yes.
Next item up, resolutions, our resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty five.
Resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty five, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri and the Salem area Chamber of Commerce for operation of the visitor's center.
Thank you.
So you all did approve an agreement just about a month ago for the current fiscal year, so we were behind on getting that. This is an attempt to get us ahead, so to get it approved before the fiscal year starts. So same terms, same amounts, so.
Okay.
Any questions, any other questions?
Catherine?
Nope.
All right. This time do I have a motion for resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty five?
I make a motion to approve resolution number eighteen dash twenty twenty five.
Do I have a second?
I second, go ahead John.
No, go ahead.
I second that motion.
No further discussion, I call for the vote, Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Dent.
I can't hear you.
Alderman Dent.
Yes.
And Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
To be used for purposes of conducting activities associated with the educational programs delivered by the university for the AEL program.
Okay, Mayor and Alderman, this is same agreement as we approved last year for the use of the space for the AEL, former GED classes. Ms. Pat is here this evening, the instructor for those classes, if you should have any questions. No significant changes, a few typo corrections, so.
This time do I have a motion for resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty five?
I move that we approve resolution, resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
This time I'll call for the vote, Alderman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
And Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Next up, resolution twenty dash twenty twenty five.
Resolution twenty dash twenty twenty five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to renew an agreement between the City of Salem, Missouri and the Department of Health and Senior Services for the purpose of sewer shed disease trend monitoring.
So this is to renew our current contract we have with Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services. They provide supplies for, for us to test our wastewater treatment plant for any COVID variances. We are reimbursed $100 per week, or per sample, and we send in a sample per week.
Okay.
Okay, thank you Stacy.
Thanks.
At this time do I have a motion for resolution twenty dash twenty twenty five?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I will call for the vote, Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
And Alderman Dent.
Yes.
Next up, resolution number twenty dash twenty, or twenty-one dash twenty twenty five.
Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign acknowledgement of the renewal for health insurance from United Healthcare for employees of the City of Salem, Missouri as required by the Affordable Care Act. And this resolution, just like it says, is an acknowledgement that the city is staying compliant with the Affordable Care Act.
Okay.
So at this time do I have a motion for resolution number twenty-one dash twenty twenty five?
I make a motion for approval of resolution twenty-one dash twenty twenty five.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
This time I'll call for the vote, Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman Dent.
Yes.
And Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Next up, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty five.
Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty twenty five, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Salem, Missouri to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for ADA transition, transition plan improvements on routes thirty-two, seventy-two, and nineteen within the city limits.
Thank you.
So this agreement between the Missouri Highway Commission and the city is for MoDOT to be performing ADA upgrades to those sections of highway, roughly from the S curve on Highway nineteen, headed south to the intersection of nineteen and Scenic Rivers, and then along Scenic Rivers from Missouri Boulevard to Cardy Street. So on the north side of Scenic Rivers Boulevard. So they will be adding, so like I said, they'll be doing ADA compliance at approaches to businesses, at street intersections, those types of things for the sidewalks. They will also be adding a crosswalk at the crossroads intersection across Highway nineteen. So there's not one there currently. In addition, they'll be replacing the sidewalk that was taken out around that corner when McDonald's went in. So, so they will be adding some new sections of sidewalk and, and a new crosswalk, so much needed. When they do, I'm hopeful, that's not part of this project, but I'm hopeful that when they do the south side, whenever that is of Scenic Rivers, that maybe we get some crosswalks across Scenic Rivers. I, I know a couple of places at the crossroads would be a really good place for one. They also, on MoDOT's radar, has been a crosswalk, they're at Walmart across to Atkins Street. But, but those two are not part of this project, so, okay. At this time, there's no identified costs to the city, but if we do need to relocate any utilities, that would be at our expense.
Okay.
Did you have anything else to add to that, Steve? Okay.
Any questions from the board?
I have none.
No.
All right, do I have a motion for resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty five?
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two twenty twenty five.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
I'll call for the vote, Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
Alderman Dent.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
All right. Last but not least, we got our last tabled item from previous meeting for a request for utilities outside of the city boundaries.
So it was not included in your agenda, but I do have up on the screen the previous staff summary for this, in case any of you want to refresh on, on some of those details. And I do have the map of the property as well, if you guys want to see it.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Discussion for the board.
I know previously we had talked about offering services upon annexation, and after considering it myself, I, I think that's still probably the best option going forward. Is still allowing voluntary annexation in, and then the services. That's, this is your time, Mr. Perkins.
Yeah, I'd like to get, get the water from the city available, I've got two, two lots left that I'd like to put up for sale. I'd like to get water if I could, on that line, there's already three people, I'm, I'm on the line, Gulf Horse is on the line, and Robbie Owen is on the line. I'd be willing to, to move both those lots and the lot that I'm on into the city. But I understand that those lots cannot be moved into the city because it's not contiguous to the city, and the laws, as I've kind of looked a little bit, says it, said that we can't, I can't move into the city.
That was not according to.
It's not my understanding.
That is not our understanding. It can be done according to our city attorney, that's.
I think.
He's just not here to, to have this conversation.
My understanding of it was, if we were going to expand it, it had to be continuous. We couldn't leapfrog, but if it was voluntary, something had to do with the voluntary annex of it. And I, and James isn't here.
Right, and James and I do read it differently. James and I read it differently, so I do wish he were here.
I really wish he was here too, but.
Right.
Yeah, well, he's not.
He's not. But that was, that was my understanding of it, and that's what we had offered previously.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I've been on both sides of this issue, I've been for it and against it. And I've thought about it. And at some point, we're going to have to quit offering utilities outside of the city's limits, or we're not going to be in the municipality. But we do have existing infrastructure in there, and myself, it's there, it's already there, we've got people on it, and I think it's, we're making a mountain out of a molehill, and at this point, I'm, I'm for, I'm for, I'm okay with it. Now, what the rest of the board wants to do, allow you to hook up without annexation, but at some point, we've, we've got to quit. But we do have existing infrastructure there, and I don't think it's that big of a deal. I don't think it's going to cause us to lose our municipality at this point, but at some time, I mean, if, if we didn't have the existing infrastructure there, I wouldn't be for putting it in, but it is there, and they're wanting to hook up for, to water, so at this time, I am in favor of it. That's, that's just my position.
All right. This time, who would like to make a motion for?
Thank you.
Voluntary annexation.
Well, since I'm the only one that spoke up, I, I mean, I'll make the motion to approve it, and then we'll let the vote be where it is.
Can we get you to clarify?
I'm for letting them hook up about annexation.
So, at this time, then, do I have a second for that motion?
It dies for lack of a second.
Motion dies for lack of a second, now is there a motion for voluntary annexation?
I'll make a motion that with voluntary annexation, that we approve them to hook up afterwards.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. It's time I will call for the vote, Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
No.
And Alderman Dent.
Yes.
Moving right along, next up is reports of city officials, boards and committees, Burridge, you're up first.
I don't have much to report on this evening, just a quick request for a special board meeting next Monday, so that we can approve budget. We will have some additional items on that as well. Electric rates for you all to consider, as well as we'll have our floodplain contract with MRPC. I'm trying to think there's, and we will have a change order for the downtown project again, so. So if that works for you all, I, like I said, I would request Monday, June thirtieth, so, okay.
Is everybody available?
Yeah, yes sir.
Okay.
Better Monday than Thursday, because it won't be.
That's, and that's all that I have for this evening.
Okay. All right. Oh yeah, it's my turn to, it's my time to shine. All right. So first up, we have the Vintage Americana Parade that they're having, or that's the title for it, for Friday, our normal parade for the Fourth of July would be Friday, July the fourth at six PM. Salem, Missouri Fireworks Committee, they'll be doing a firework celebration at the Salem City Park to follow up to the parade with vendors and more, firework shows at Dark. I think that I accidentally volunteered for a dunk tank over there, so if anybody wants to go see the mayor. Yep, everybody wants to line up to get the mayor wet, there you go. Next up, Montauk State Park, they got an Ozark Fly Fisher fifteenth annual Missouri Stream outing on July eighteenth through the twentieth. The public is invited to attend, educational sessions promoting the conservation of Missouri's beautiful streams. Attendees are encouraged to participate in various activities and science-based presentation involving stream water quality monitoring, fly casting, fly tying instructions. If you're interested in this free event, visit the Sersei Building during the outing to attain details, or you can call area code three one four, five six zero, one three three five. Next up, Dent County Toy Drive. They're now accepting applications looking for craft fair vendors and food truck vendors for their event July the twenty-sixth at the Dent County Commons from nine AM to four PM. Join for free, or join at a free old-fashioned carnival, a poker run hosted by Abe, the Current River Cruisers Cruising Cars Craft Show, food trucks, and music. If you have, if you want any more information, you can call five seven three, two four seven, two two one six. And last but not least, just as a reminder, the Dent County Museum is currently open until September on Sundays. They're open from one to four, they're located at four hundred North Pershing, at the corner of North Pershing and East Fourth. Other than that, that's all I have for this evening. Hopefully I didn't say that too fast. Next up, Steve, come on up.
Good evening, Alderman, Mayor, good to see you. So kickoff here with wastewater treatment plant, continued preparation for the upcoming construction phase as always, daily testing. The water department's been working on water line repairs and locates. Riser, risers were prepared for the manholes for this paving project that's coming up. They're currently milling over on West First Street next to the elementary school in preparation for pavement tomorrow, hopefully. They're hitting the crunch time here with the rain that we had, so. The electric department, line trimming crew, and the contract crew are continuing to make gains across town, taking care of personal lines and feeder lines. I'm going to try to lean back a little bit here. Just as always, like I said before, we ask for everybody's patience with the brush that ends up in their yards. We did have a call today, somebody had it for over a week. That means that it might have gotten, they might have got past it, so it's good to call in on those situations. Electric department finished up work at Four Rivers, their facility over there is ready for their electrician to turn it on, so they can, their workers won't die inside while they're trying to.
their workers won't die inside while they're trying to trim that out in the heat. Did some service upgrades, uh, researched double bucket truck options for possible purchase in the coming year. And, uh, they ensured all their gloves and hot sticks, safety equipment were tested, uh, and cleared for use, so. Construction crew has prepared and poured a pad at the water, is working on, uh, pouring a pad at the water department. That's part of their final projects, uh, on this budget year. And made necessary repairs in city hall restrooms and such. Street department's assist, assisting with traffic control for the crew laying new pavement. Continued pavement patches across the city. If someone public-wise has a, a spot that's a dig out from a water line repair and it hasn't been taken care of, please call in so that we can get to that. I, you know, when we said we were doing that last purchase of coal patch, we really believe we can knock out all the, the patch work in town. So just give, give a call to the main office, put a work order in, we'll, we'll initiate a work order and get to that, so. Mowing and more mowing, obviously, they're, uh, really busy with that last bit of rain. Rain we had really kicked the grass into overdrive, taking care of the lawn out at the airport. Street painting projects are in the works. They've done their continued clean out of culverts and drop-ins for city streets. The mechanic's working on and maintaining the equipment as usual and keeping our mowers in good shape so we can keep trucking around town. Cemetery crew working hard in the heat to keep the cemetery looking good, and that is a wrap. Does anybody have any questions? Oh, oh, hang on, sorry, sorry, I'm, I'm trying to go fast. Fourth of July lighting. Ideally, for the Fourth of July, we would just turn a switch off and all the street lights in the park would turn off for the ten o'clock show. That's not how that's set up or designed. It's, um, there's no easy way for us to turn those off. So now you're gonna be underneath a show that the presenter is saying will be visible for three to four miles. So whether the street lights are on or not, it should be pretty epic, so. Sorry, public, we, we just, there was no easy way without reconfiguring the lighting, and that's not how streetlights work, so. Uh, and it's a safety issue. Even if we could, I don't know, do something to shut them off, there would be no quick way to pop them back on, and then we have people walk into their cars in the dark and stuff, so. Uh, and I don't know if that's been said out loud a whole lot, uh, for the fireworks stuff, but yes, come see the vendors, yes, come to the park, but you're gonna be able to see it. He said for a three-mile radius easily, so you should be able to find a high spot somewhere in town and just enjoy it from your own porch if you want to, right? So, anyway, it's gonna be great.
I don't have any. Does the board have any? No, I think you're free, Steve.
Thanks.
Something I would like to throw out there, is there any way we could probably post maybe, uh, cooling centers?
What?
Uh, cooling centers, like, do we have any cooling centers, like a list for cooling centers, like for the excessive heat for anybody?
Oh, cooling centers?
Yeah. C O.
It sounded like coin centers. I just.
That's because my mic echoes, echoes.
So, so we will have our standard cooling centers? Okay. Yeah, so the PD will put a post out in the morning about the locations of those cooling centers.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I, I, I just had some concerns with this excessive, you know, length of heat that we've been having here lately, so. All right, moving right along. Stacy, do you have anything? All right, never hurts to ask. All right, we'll move it right along to, uh, the board members. I'll start with Alderman Letchworth.
I have nothing to report.
Alderman McKenzie.
Nothing to report.
Alderman Dant.
The Salem Community Choir will be presenting a patriotic spectacular here at City Hall on the Fourth of July. Two performances, two o'clock, four o'clock. Um, there is a quilt raffle, and the winner of that raffle will be announced at the close of the four o'clock, um, performance. It's gonna be a lot of fun. It has some humor and has some serious stuff too, and a salute to the members of the armed forces. So it's free, and whatever you want to do, bring your friends and come and see a good show, 'cause it's really gonna be good. Also, the Community Involvement Committee has been meeting with its subcommittees. There is a subcommittee for animal, uh, interest in animal problems within the city. Um, there is a committee for, um, possible addiction. Um, there is a committee for the cemetery, and, uh, there are some other committees. Beautification is another one. And, um, they have all been meeting. I've been to their meetings. Uh, there are also plans in the work for a super spectacular Fourth of July twenty twenty-six, and that's all I can tell you about that right now.
Thank you. Alderman Whalen.
Uh, no reports tonight.
Well, I guess that leaves us up for last on the list. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Now I'll call for the vote. Alderman Dant.
Yes.
Alderman McKenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Whalen.
Yes.
And Alderman Letchworth.
Yes.
Thank you all for attending tonight.